My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have motion to adopt agenda.
I would say.
I'll second.
Motion to make the second in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Um, consent agenda. We have a motion on that.
I think, you know what? Okay, now, the agenda was...
That concludes that.
No, I, but I, I think we had an item that has the LS networks. Yeah, issuing.
But we're gonna table it, not let them stay up.
Yeah, I would just get to it and then just table it.
Okay, table it later.
Yeah, we'll table, table all business.
Okay.
My move, we approve the consent calendar agenda.
Motion to make the second in favor.
Aye.
All right, okay, motion carried. Move down to guest speaker, communication informational items. Uh, you'll see, you have a letter in there from LCP on the annual festival of trees. Twelve hundred and thirty dollars, they did get on those trees. Ginger?
Yes, they did. Sorry. I was running ahead of myself on your housing crisis seminar, I wanna make sure I have on my calendar. Yes, we did really well, and, um, it was a, uh, it was a, again, one of the highlights, I think. We learn something every time we do it, and, yeah, it was good.
Oh, that reminds me, too. The person that bought the townhouse tree is donating all the decorations back to the town. All the decorations off the townhouse tree, he donated them back.
Oh.
Including the tree stand.
So you can do it again next year?
Yes.
He said, ask if we wanted the tree. Didn't know it.
That's great, that is really good.
Um, next on the housing crisis seminar is set for February sixteenth.
Where is that?
In Portland.
It's in Portland?
According to this.
It doesn't say anything on.
It's up on top. Housing crisis, and then it's Friday, February sixteenth in Portland. Yeah. But I think it's something that we might need to start looking at. I don't know. I don't know that, I mean, I don't have to go, but somebody else possibly go to that.
Are you doing? I don't know, I'm, uh, that's why I was busy writing it down, so I could find out more about it. I need to check it out.
I think, uh...
Red Rock comes in, I think it's gonna be a lot more urgent issue.
Yeah.
Because it's, that's a complaint I hear constantly with any real estate transaction that evolves, there's, Lake County has two, Lakeview has two homes. Low, very low end, and, uh, over a hundred, you know, over six-figure, and it's, people in the middle keep complaining about that, and that turns into issues where you do not want a federal agency coming in telling us how we have to develop those either, because it's, you do it yourself voluntarily, or they get involved, and you're not gonna like how they get involved, because they use a sledgehammer instead of a scalpel for how they designate how you're doing, so.
Well, and, uh, I don't think we have to wait for Red Rock. I hear people all the time can't find a place to live, or a decent place to live. There's some really tacky places around now.
There's also some nice places, we said.
There's nice houses themselves, but they're, well, the nice places are red.
And that's partially what this is addressing, too, so I would recommend that somebody can go there, I think it'd be helpful, just for, even if somebody's just planning, so they have an idea of what's coming down the landscape. We also have a different administration federally, but the state seems to have really picked this up as hard, and it seems to be one of land use folks' new priority targets. Especially with the homelessness crisis in Portland, and it filters everywhere.
So, if I could just add to that, I think we, I know, I came here and we talked about the brownfields project through the EPA. The whole, how that was even, uh, how that even came up was about our housing crisis here, and the frustration of trying to figure out how to begin to make plans for it. And I know it sounds like a stretch, how do you get from brownfields to, um, to housing? But we have quite a bit of land in the north, um, portion of the, of the town that has been sort of languishing, that's been industrial, and it's hard for all of us who have been here for a very long time to imagine it being in any different configuration than it currently is. But part of this project, this, the initial three-year project, is to do community planning about what, what do people want to see in our community in regards to recreation, housing, et cetera, and then, sort of, what do we see that property, those properties down there, um, becoming? Because we're never gonna get, you know, four more mills back there again. So while it doesn't mean that the housing would necessarily be there, we are gonna get some planning out of this about it. And we were struggling trying to understand how we might get that, and this could bring that to us. The application has been, we've been notified, the application is in the hands of, um, the EPA and the department that reviews it, and they're supposed to be doing that next month, and in March, and then, hopefully, in May, we will hear something about the, the project. But I just wanted to add that to it. All of this could be really helpful to us if we just keep our ears open about things like this that are happening in Portland. It's all gonna interface at some point, I hope.
Well, I'll put it on my list to do so, or whatever, if, you know, I mean...
You value the euro? Ah, no. Not the euro, I think you're having more trouble trying to get some shopping done. My bad.
Although, since it's gonna be down, I'll just...
And next on the agenda, PAC meeting, twenty seconds. Minutes earlier than the last one, as well. And this is where we, we discussed, uh, at one point, and I was gonna bring on the winged up again out there, that they talked about putting out green houses, and Jeff and I talked about that, that they need the list, no sure if they're gonna do that, so we could accommodate with our geothermal, because they were talking about running the geothermal through those. Whether it's return lines or what, I'm not sure. But, uh, and the other thing that, uh, we brought up was the, that prison group in Ontario that do the signs and stuff, that they also do like, uh, in the commissioners' meeting rooms, where the commissioners sit, they do those as well. They do all kinds of furniture and everything for businesses and offices, so forth, they do beautiful work. We might think about booking in some stuff with them as well.
Certainly for science.
Get some pricing from them, and see what...
Yeah.
What we're up against.
And we have a letter in here from Kevin Hawke from the Lake County Grove Department on the, on the VQ, I think this all has to do with the waste out there at the dump. Next is the CHIP meeting agenda. So, it'll be the eleventh. Department's not here, he's on that committee. Also, we have a letter here, or a notice that Representative Vance has now been appointed to the state senator. So, that'd be a big plus for us, as well. And we have celebrating Charlie Tracy's retirement Saturday, January thirteenth, from eleven to two, at TJ's Family Fund Center.
I did just put a couple of more informational items in there.
Yeah, more informational items, just not on the...
It wasn't on the, I mean, I didn't put it on there, but it was just information for you guys to know what's going on. One, with this, with the marijuana, um, where the US, the attorney general rescinded the coal memo on marijuana prosecution, so they're supposed to have their, and it's voted to now, probably by Friday this week, this little week, have a little more update on the impacts of, 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 so that's just the information.
Also, you have a letter here from Anderson Engineering, I'm glad to see that they have started projects being closed out. We have Robertus report.
We're at the department head section, is that...
Yeah.
Maybe we're down before him. All right, now I need departments.
That's where you're...
That's where I need to go.
Miss public comment area.
All right. Daryl Anderson, oh, public, we have a public comment.
Yes, we do.
Hearing none?
No.
Hearing none? No, Ginger has something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ginger. You gotta talk a little louder with me, please.
Hearing none.
Um, yes, I'm Ginger Castile, I'm speaking, um, about, and on behalf of Lakeview Community Partnership. Do you want my personal address? I'm also a Lakeview citizen. Do I have to broadcast my address? Um, okay, thank you. I just wanted to give you a really short update. Obviously, you know, we talked a little bit about the festival of trees, again, it was our third year, and it was successful. And I wanted to say that, um, the activities that we're continuing right now would be the festival of trees, already starting to talk about what it's gonna be next year, it takes time to plan for it. We're continuing the cash mob on the second Thursday, I believe it's the second Thursday of every month, that's this Thursday, um, again, and I can't remember right now where they meet to go, and I do know where it's gonna be, but I can't say. So, um, can't say where they're going, I can't say where they're going, but I believe they meet at the chamber, and then they go from there. So we're gonna continue that every month. Uh, they did do, um, we did do a lights program for, um, the businesses to encourage everyone to put white lights in their windows, um, at Christmas time, and we're gonna continue that throughout the year, we're gonna continue doing that. And we're working with Safeway right now to hopefully get some, uh, twinkie lights, or some white lights or something in the trees that are out front, that just kinda perk that area up a little bit. Also, uh, the Alger Theater has taken an incredible amount of our time and energy over the last year to do our due diligence, um, to look at the purchase of the building, and then, you know, from that point, uh, once we have purchased the building, to move forward with, uh, doing some restoration work, some upgrades of equipment, et cetera. So, we're very fortunate that we have come to an agreement with the samples who own the building, that agreement isn't finalized with, um, the signature on the page, so I can't talk about that too much. But we're all in agreement, and we're really looking forward to it. We're very excited about it, because we will be renting the building from the samples until we are able to purchase it, which means that we can open it for activities, and we already have two things that are scheduled. One is the VIP reception for the gala this Saturday, and on February second, there's a cowboy, um, concert and poetry reading, um, in the facility. And there's two or three other things that are kind of on the books. We have every intention, we have, we will be having the access to the current projector, so we can do older films, we can't do new stuff until we get a, a digital projector, but we won't be doing any of that until after we have purchased the building. So we started our fundraising efforts, um, for the building. We have a solid, um, approximately eleven thousand dollars right now that we've raised towards, uh, the community portion, which we're asking the community for fifty-five thousand dollars, which we really need to show that there's commitment on the community's part to raise the rest of the money through grants and, and, um, other larger donations. So we're getting there, it's kind of slow, we have a soft, um, commitment of another five thousand dollars through a project with the Ser Optimus Club, and that's also gonna be really, uh, helpful to us, and we've got a lot of other things in the works that we'll be doing. So, that's kind of an update about the Alger Theater. It, like I said, it's taken a lot of time and energy, and we're really hoping that we can, um, focus on other things, which brings me to, um, what I wanted to, uh, ask your advice about, and to let you know that we, unfortunately, we were not able to get a rare AmeriCorps position this year, and it wasn't any, um, any, uh, negative thing towards Lakeview or the Lakeview Community Partnership, it was kind of a, a little bit of a snafu that happened with the University of Oregon that supervises, or runs the program, and that they increased the number, they asked AmeriCorps for more, um, slots this time around, because they were getting a lot of requests for, um, AmeriCorps volunteers throughout the, the state, and they manage that program. And so they asked for, they requested slots, they got more, I think they got like six to eight more slots, and, um, so they put it out there, you know, to get applications and everything, and, um, they did get our application, it was accepted, we did have a couple of interviews. Uh, people get to decide, the AmeriCorps volunteers get to decide if they wanna be here or not. One of them had a medical issue and needed to be in a larger city, and the other one went on to do something else, but the problem was they didn't get as many applications for people who wanted to be AmeriCorps volunteers, so there were six communities in Oregon that got accepted to be in the program, but did not get an AmeriCorps, um, volunteer, and we were one of them. So, we are limping and missing Will very much at this point in time, but we did, uh, the money that we received from all of the folks that, um, stepped up to the plate to help us fund that position for this year, everyone has agreed to, uh, at this point, to allow us to use that money to hire a part-time, twenty-hour person, a, a, a week person, to, um, kind of take up the slack for not having a volunteer. We were faced with having to do that anyway, um, not after this year, because they were making changes with the AmeriCorps program that you could only have one for two years, this would have been our second year, so we were gonna have to go out and, and, and do this anyway, it just came a little bit sooner than we thought it was going to. So, I'm coming to you with the request, um, that, to, to change the request that we, that Will made, um, along with, I think, uh, I don't know if it was Robert and, that came to, uh, request funds twenty-five hundred dollars from the town to go towards that position, and we would, um, like to exercise that, you'd already approved that in your budget for this year, but we want to change the purpose from the AmeriCorps volunteer to a part-time person. And it's basically going to be the same work plan, and they'll be doing the same things and helping us with, um, the committees and with the Alger project, et cetera, it's just that instead of it being an AmeriCorps volunteer, it's gonna be an actual employee. So I would like your input about what you might, what more you might need from us in that regard to, um, satisfy that, uh...
You said twenty hours a week?
Pardon?
Twenty hours a week?
Twenty hours a week. The AmeriCorps volunteer was, um, I think it was, it was around thirty hours a week is what they're, I mean, I know Will would be more than that, but, um, this, yeah, it would be twenty hours a week, and, and...
And that employee, what duties do they have to strictly community partnership?
Yes, they would, they work for the Lakeview Community Partnership, and they work to be staff to the committees, to assist with the resource development for the Alger. Everything that Will did, that person would be involved with that, would be less time involved, it's more costly to have an employee, obviously, than it is a, an AmeriCorps volunteer, so we get a little less time from our money, but that's, that's kind of the fact of life on that.
Oh, so we have the money budgeted, correct?
Yeah, we just budgeted it for, we had designated it rare, and then also LCP, they're already giving LCP funding for the general.
Probably would just need something in writing from you requesting that, and put it in our agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, so we could write a letter and just explain it in the letter, rather than, I, I mean, I didn't expect that you would do, you'd do it just verbally today, but I wanted to make sure that whatever information you would like to have, we have included in that, so.
Just the reason for it, and just maybe you say your request, uh, to do rare.
But we still need to fill that.
Yeah, we still need to fill that position, we, we knew that, uh, obviously, the position last year that Will filled really helped us get a lot further down the road, and we need to continue on, so. Okay, great, thank you.
Could I ask you a question in regards to? The Main Street project is what the community partnership has modeled itself under. As far as taking over a facility, is that something that, I mean, you're, you're going to, going to management, I, the partnership is gonna be managing a facility now, and, I mean, you're renting a facility, you're, you're managing it?
We are.
Is that what we're paying for, is the manager of that facility?
No, no. Okay, so part of that, that position, as the work plan, uh, for the Ameri, AmeriCorps volunteer, the rare position that was for last year, and again, also for this year, is part of their work plan, they would be involved, um, with the Alger Theater, but there were, you know, the other duties, too. It's not, they're not doing that full-time. We have, um, two volunteers right now that are heading up, um, I'm the committee chair for the Alger, uh, and then we have two, um, uh, committee members that are, um, working with, one is gonna be volunteer concessions coordinator, and we have another one that's the events coordinator, that's gonna coordinate, um, the scheduling in the events, and working with the people that are doing the events and all that, it's all volunteer. That is not always gonna be that way, because as we go down the road, it's gonna get busier, and we know that, but we're gonna manage it the best we can with, um, volunteers right now. Part of the position that, um, that we're, the half-time position will be to assist us in doing some resource development for grants to help with, uh, capacity building, which would be an employee for the theater. So yes, we are going into facility management, but that position is not gonna be, that twenty hours a week is not...
You need a lot of secretarial work for getting the letters out.
Yes, and coordinating some of the other things, uh, the, the festival of trees, the cash mob, coordinating all of those things that, all of the things that Will did, yeah. Does that help?
It does. I, I would like for the community partnership to come back, I, I was very involved when the, the Main Street project got underway here in Lakeview inside forums, and served on various committees to start with, as I did with you.
Right.
And the direction that it's taken is not what I saw Main Street present to the town of Lakeview, and the members of the town of Lakeview present at the meeting from Main Street. And so I, I would like to ask the partnership to come back to this governing body and tell us what you have accomplished from your initial endeavors of what you wanted to, to set out to do, and give us a full report. I, I, I don't think that some of the things that you're heading down are, are quite what first came about, maybe I should have been more involved through the...
Well, I, I agree with...
But I think the town must have, you know...
Sure, I agree with you, uh, things were much different three or four years ago when we started down that road, and what we, how we started out, um, you know, is different than where we are now, and we are probably, um, we're probably overdue to come in and do something like that, and we can do that.
Well, you know, you can jump the gender whenever you're ready.
Yeah, let me check with a couple of the other, um, board members and committee members that would probably be here to do that, we'll see if we can't put something together.
Yep, schedule it.
Yep.
Thanks, Ginger.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the more guest speakers or public comment. Okay, we're done, we'll move on to department reports. Uh, Daryl was not here. Our chief?
I don't have anything further, did you guys get my ear-in report in there?
Yes.
I hope it's readable. Did get a text from Stan today saying that he'll be back tomorrow, and things aren't nearly as grim as he was thinking they were, so, which is good news for us, so. That's all.
Okay, we'll go to the finance director, Shelley. If you have anything to report.
I think that's definitely talked through the work session, is what I think, so we're good.
Nine-one-one director, Scott.
Well, nine-one-one is moving fast and furious, we're, uh, we've been working, we have a conference call with Quest and Tuaro, and different vendors, we meet once a week, telephone. We've already had, we've got our new phone system ordered, we had the administrative training today on how to manage the system, how to fit stuff in, take it out, and, uh, she flew in from Melbourne, Florida, into, I think, and into Medford, and found out training wasn't in Medford, it's in Lakeview, so she drove from Medford to Lakeview. Yeah, she was like, holy smokes, just like nothing, and I said, well, this is the Outback, and this is what happens when you go to the Outback. You bring your own first aid kit and lots of, uh, refreshments and stuff, and never pass the gas station. So, tomorrow we'll have onsite visit from Airbus and, uh, our Power nine-one-one vendor, to make sure that our site is prepped and ready for the equipment, the equipment will be shipped. It's in Denver right now, so it'll be on a mule train to Lakeview, so we should get it probably within, uh, a couple of weeks. And then we are slated for install like the fifteenth of March, and we're gonna try to do a seamless cutover. We'll, we'll see how it all goes, but, uh, basically, all brand-new back equipment, the fronting equipment that we use every day, it's not gonna change, it'll look the same, so, um, in March, we'll have three days of training trainer from, uh, Power nine-one-one, which will, uh, train our people. Of course, Cindy, uh, our newest employee to the academy, he leaves the twenty-first for Department of Public Standards and Training for three weeks, actually, four weeks, because he has to do the basic telecommunicator, and then he does emergency medical dispatch, so, and we're just looking for more people that would like to do part-time.
So what new features does all of this equipment bring?
We're basically moving from...
Or some...
They have a lot of stuff that, that, you know, they throw out a lot of acronyms, but we're basically moving from, um, analog to digital. And it's a lot of backend stuff, a lot more options, GUI interfaces, yeah, you know, this stuff that, okay, that, for us, it gives us a few more options. It was always there, but it was like three clicks to get it, now it's just one click to get it, so, um, but, you know, our telephone lines just stay the same, but we're not adding more telephones, we're not adding, they're adding, uh... we're not adding, they're adding IP, which is internet-based, which is strongly against because we have candid lines coming in, which we have, we've had not much problems with the tandem lines, but internet tends to drop and we have to supply 99.999%, which means we'll be down 10 minutes a year and internet's like 75%, so we'll be down four hours a year, not be able to receive calls, so we're working hard. And that's because we only have one gateway or one pipe that comes into Lakeview and we don't have a redundant system. If we had two fibers coming in, it would work, but we only got one fiber coming in and one fiber going out, really bothering this backhoe and then we're isolated and we're cut off from work.
It happens too, huh?
It happens. Oh, it happens, yeah, I mean...
It does.
When they were doing the construction out there at Danube Gap, they didn't cut it once and not twice, but three times. Roughly, it's a hundred thousand dollars an hour.
Just not you were connected.
So hopefully until we get another pipe into Lakeview somehow, the problem is it's all, it's all monetarily based, you know, to put a fiber into Lakeview is, let's just say, 10 million dollars and the FCC says, the PUC says you have to return back within five years, but there's not a population base to get that funding back, so they're prohibited from trying to bring it in, so. One of those difficulties, but we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Any of you folks want to come down and visit the center? Want to walk down, see how things run?
Just tour.
Yeah, pencil in.
Thank you, Scott. Where's Chief, Randall?
I've been working with ODOT, I gave you guys the heads-up on that in one of the previous things, on some speed enforcement grant. They've told me that they've had an overwhelming response for grants this year and so my original proposal was for $5,000 from them to buy four new radar units. Their counter has been at this time 2,500 for two new units, which two is better than none, so I told them we would, we would be thankful for anything that they offer, so the awards haven't come out yet. I expect to see something this week or maybe next week from them regarding that, but it looks like as it stands, we should receive 2,500 to get two new radar units. With that, there's a requirement that whoever has those radar units to work 20 hours a week of, or 20 hours a month, sorry, 20 hours a month of traffic and so that equates to less than two hours of shift dedicated to traffic control. And so we'll station them in areas that are our biggest complaints, North J Street, South Third Street, you know, areas that we have long straight stretches that we get a lot of speed complaint on and so hopefully we'll be able to get some of those things taken care of. North G Street, South G Street, you know, the highway's always been a big one for traffic as well, E Street's real big and so we'll concentrate on those areas as well as around the school. So like I said, I hope to hear something from them. It is a cash upfront kind of a deal, we pay for it, it's a reimbursement grant, so we'll have to figure out how we're going to figure out, work out all that stuff, but.
I was going to ask, once you get them and how they are forever or?
They are, as long as we meet the requirements of the grant.
You have to meet that requirement every year or every year?
I think they require, they require five years of reporting, that's what it was the last time I got one of these grants. The last time I was able to get one of these grants is when I was an SRO approximately 10 years ago. I applied through ODOT and got a similar grant and we got a couple radar units then and so there is, I think, a five-year reporting requirement that goes with that. And we have forms from back then and I don't know if it's the same as what they'll want this time, but I have forms that...
I don't know how forms are in there really soon.
I know, so, but that is where we stand on that one. And then I don't know if Veritas put it in her report, we've finished the first part of our hiring process, we did the post-testing, police officer selection test, looks like maybe three or four people have passed at a level that will warrant them an interview and so we hope to move forward with the interview process next Friday. I think that was the date that we had chosen and so I think as long as the letters get out and we go there, hopefully we'll be interviewing for a police officer next week and then from that point forward we'd go into background checks, which is sort of a time-consuming process, but we are moving forward.
Public work, Jeff?
Well, I only, I only have one thing to touch on briefly besides what's on my report. We got a phone call in the middle of this last month from Kimquip that we buy our chlorine gas from and they're getting out of the chlorine gas business, so they said they could hand us off pretty seamlessly to Sierra Chemical, which they have a plant in Sparks, they have a plant in Stockton, California and we thought, well, that'll be fine. And then our first correspondence with them was the deal we had with Kimquip, we paid a $70, roughly $70 per trip fuel surcharge and they said, well, it's going to be a little different situation now, you're going to have to pay freight on the delivery and it's pretty, I got a letter from them today and the very minimum it's going to be is like $640 per trip.
Oh, yikes.
And we get delivered anywhere from, right now we're getting about eight trips a year, so the other side of that was 640 is like the best-case scenario, that's if we get together with Alturas and with Tulley Lake and we all take our order at the same time. So if we don't get our order at the same time as Alturas and Tulley Lake, we can't get lined up, then it could be as much as $1,500 per trip. So it has a pretty big potential to impact the sewer and the water side. So we're trying to, we've been talking with Airgas and Platinum Falls, they have the potential to sell the product and they do deliver over here, they deliver acetylene and oxygen to SNS equipment, but right now they don't have permits to store chlorine in Platinum Falls, so we're going to keep working towards that and maybe we can get, you know, something more reasonable, but it looks like we're going to get stung pretty good for our first, you know, I'm thinking first couple of trips anyway, till we can make other arrangements, but pretty, pretty big hit.
Can you get more of a payload in trips and store?
You know, there's a, there's a problem with that, you can only have so much in each site and we have three sites we can store right now, one of them's maxed out when they deliver. The other two we could store more at, but the way we're permitted to store there now is only minimal, so then, you know, the rate for storage from the fire marshal goes up with the amount of bottles and then I touched on that very subject with Alturas and they said they don't have any other storage facility available, so they're going to have to continue to get, you know, a minimum of seven deliveries a year.
Oh.
You know, I don't want to leave them in the works, but whatever we can do, but I'm hoping that the thing with Airgas and Platinum Falls will get completely away from that company. Their headquarters in Seattle, they said, you know, how much are we talking about? And I told them, well, you know, at the very most 10 bottles per month and they lost interest pretty fast.
About the larger communities, like...
Yeah, so, you know, maybe if we can get a little cooperation between Alturas and ourselves and Tulley Lake, maybe we'll have enough, you know, to get somebody interested in doing it, but right now we're going to be spending a little more money.
Is there anybody in Medford or Vin?
There, there is in Medford, yeah. Airgas is in Vin, Airgas is in Medford, but neither of them either handle chlorine at this time.
What kind of chlorine is it?
It's a chlorine gas, NSO2 for disinfecting water and pipe maintenance.
There are only, and I've attempted, I can probably give it in my report later, the emergency preparedness committee that I serve on, I had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago and the chlorine gas is one of the major hazards in Lake County. There are only two, it and I think the old Canyon Dam and so those two items are Lake County's major threats as far as catastrophes and so I'm sure that's why it's such a guarded product and not many handle it on their own sites in Medford and Vin.
Sure.
Well, good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to town manager. Do you have the report?
Okay.
And we'll table the old business, the LS Network, the agreement that we hear from Jeff. New business resolution number 920, approval of work order with Department of Corrections. Would we have a family work order?
Doing ground maintenance, so it's a condition of what we approved last time.
Is this going to replace hiring another person during the summer to do the parks that we've done at the store company? So we will still hire...
This would be a summer project. It won't be just the...
So this is, what, like, maybe considering the complaints I've gotten about the creek bed that runs across from the hospital and backside.
We already approved that one by us.
Because that really needs to be cleaned out and that's a huge source of irritation for these residents a lot, and it does, but that's the kind of thing you're talking about, not just...
This is more ground maintenance, you know, and I don't know that we've used them, but it's in case we need them.
We may, we may not even end up using them, but...
But you have it, you have that opportunity. And then a couple of months ago, we approved, in November, we approved the work order for getting that creek cleaned out, to have them come in and help get that done, so.
So who, Jeff, who's responsible for the creek behind Seropla's park?
You know, that runs through some private property and we've been asked not to clean that out back there. The creek channel, I just walked it this fall and the creek channel is really in pretty darn good shape, as you can tell by the amount of water it took last year. A lot of the stuff that people are complaining about are on the edges of the creek.
It is, the pathway is pretty bad, but I know that's not the town's responsibility.
But I mean, we are under limitations on how much we can take out there because that shades the water in the creek.
Yeah.
And so the only thing we can really touch is right in the creek bed, so it's, you know, a lot of people say we need to get all those willows out of there, well, we are not within our rights to do that.
That's a wetlands...
Wetland.
Well, that's, that's fine, I'm not, I'm not talking about the creek bed, that, so I was talking about the pathway, which the hospital seems to, should go with Seropla's park and I disagree with that. I think that's, once you cross the creek, it's a hospital park.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know how that originally was set up with the Seropla's.
Well, Seropla's originally maintained all of where now the Lakeview Gardens is and so that was part of it at that time, then they bought that, took that, all that property, the hospital bought all that property, so, anyway, that's okay.
We've kind of stopped our maintenance this side of the creek, you know, mowing the lawns.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I hear a motion for a resolution 920 in the matter of DOC inmate work program.
I move that we approve resolution number 920 in the matter of DOC inmate work program, work order number, order number WCCF 2017-51707, exhibit 8.
Second that.
Motion made in second, in favor?
Aye.
Motion to carry.
Did you not, did you not want any reports from the council?
That's down at the bottom.
I thought, yes, on the very next, but I thought we did herbs and that was, sorry, I just...
These in the hands, we can get out of that.
We have an audit engagement letter and contract for Weizen Company, which is our auditor.
Which according to this is the Rust and Spires, yeah, they, they're changing their name based on...
They merged.
Yeah, they merged.
Yeah, the same folks that have always done our stuff, it's just two accounting firms and kind of merged, so. Bob's still here in the local office?
Oh, yeah, every day. Thank God. Yeah, yeah.
So we need a motion on this review?
Motion, sign it or...
I would, I would move that we direct the town manager to sign the audit engagement letter and contract with Weizen Company.
I'll second that.
Motion second, first, make. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sure, it's written. Okay, certificate of water right board creek.
Folks, I'll get that for you. This is the document that represents, we had a permit on this and we've had it long enough that it's turned into a certificated water right, so it means we've done all our prove-up things that we needed to do, so something that's been going on for a long time and once you reach a statute for a period, it becomes a certificate. There are certain requirements we've got to do to maintain it, we're, again, the requirements of the, of the permit, but it's to, and those requirements, some monitoring stuff that they're pretty much sticking in all of the new, you can be given water rights to make sure you're actually using what you're supposed to be using. If you don't use it for five years, then you lose it, so something we need to keep up with, but it's something we've put a lot of work into getting, so it's just something we need to maintain, so it's more informational to...
Okay. All right, now we're back on the bank proposals, review and recommendations. Oh, so you want the recommendation or I will?
We discussed this at our work session and I think, and we had a general agreement that we thought the Washington Mutual Bank proposal served us best as far as the cost so, and the services. And the services provided, so I guess I would just move that we move, gradually move our assets to Washington Mutual as directed by our town manager.
I would second that.
Motion made second, in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now down to the double writer here from Mike Beeson, again for July, it's been July 21st of 18, road closure for your occupied E Street car show. Go here, motion on that. From Uncoal Bank.
Any issues?
We've never had, it's always gone very well.
Pardon?
We've never had any issues, it's always gone very well.
I move that we accept and approve Mike Beeson, Michael Beeson's request for a road closure as stated. A second.
Motion been made, is that it, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we have our OCS bulletin in here. And we'll see what changes come out on the 01 issue. And then we'll go to mayor and council updates.
Yeah, well, basically a lot of work with Lake County, Commerce, we're getting ready for our gala on the 13th this Saturday. I'm hoping a lot of you will attend, they're a lot of fun, we're encouraging... We're encouraging but not requiring roaring twenty-type costumes or dress, so that would be kind of fun, we don't have those kind of chances very often to kind of let go and have that kind of a good time. A good dinner is waiting for you, lots of, uh, I think we set our ticket for, uh, two-hundred and fifty maximum for what Happy Horse and their assorted albers and relatives can bring into play, so, and I believe last I heard there were, you know, how, zero tickets left?
Yeah, Brandon told the last one this morning.
So, tough luck, folks. Anyway, but this, uh, we're putting together all the decorations, so that we'll have that done Friday night, and we're forward to seeing you. Some of you have invitations to the VIP reception, and I think it'll be really fun because it's at the Alter Theater, and they're setting that up kind of like the old, as much of a speakeasy as we can get, and so it'll be pretty cute in there, and it'll just be neat to see in there and see what they're looking at doing over here, what LCP talks about. So basically, that's what I think.
I have nothing to report.
Mike, I did attend the emergency preparedness meeting, and as I pointed out, there were a couple of issues that, that the, I guess, the state hands down to emergency preparedness here in this area, and two of the hazards that we have are in the town of Little View. And so one of them is flooding from Bullard Canyon, and I will just pass along a comment that was made by a county employee at the meeting, is that in times of need in Lakeview of helping divert water or whatever in case of an emergency, that the county could not be able to help us. So we can't count on any crews being able to help us, they feel that if the weather is such that there is a flood-type situation in our area, that their equipment will be elsewhere in the county.
You might hate that remark.
So, that, that was something that I, I picked up on, and I, you know, I, I do feel that we are Lake County residents, and I feel that everyone in Lakeview pays Lake County taxes and should do the same services in regards to emergency. And so when it comes to an emergency, I, I would like to hear the entities all working together. And maybe I took it wrong and should've questioned it more, but I just give you that note, Jeff, that when we are up against something that might be occurring in our community, it's yours. No, we're all about to do...
Were there representatives from the Forest Service and BLM there?
Uh, the, no, they weren't there, were they Travis? Travis, you heard it too, I, I...
Yeah, I mean, basically what was implied was, if we, if there was such an emergency in, in our community, their resources would be tied up, taken care of, their bridges and their ditches and their stuff, so they probably wouldn't have anybody available to help us. So, um, not to count on them as a resource because they're probably gonna be maxed out as well, is what was implied, and that's sort of the way I took it. But there was no Forest Service or BLM representation this time. But they have always, in the past, stated that anytime we...
And I very much mentioned that, that BLM had, had services at that, because they consider Lakeview as a part of their, where their crews work and live and reside, and so emergency in our community means that they're here to help, so you can count on...
And through the chamber, we've established a really good relationship with especially the Forest Service and the leadership of the Forest Service, and they've done some amazing things for us. And I think the, the change in personnel and in attitude at the Forest Services, a one-eighty from what it was, say, four or five years ago, when they had one of our chamber members was forced to resign as a Forest Service employee because they didn't want him out in the public. And now that has drastically changed, and so, but it might not be a bad step to ask both of them and to, to get some...
Make sure that there is...
Yeah, get some footwork done there and some connections.
They will pass through Daniel that if you ever needed help with the climate, that they have equipment here, and if it became overwhelming to you just to hear a call, then they'd put equipment on the rail for us.
Yeah, I think, I think you could, but I think those relationships maybe need to be established.
The other thing, as I said, as, as you mentioned, chlorine gas storage was a hazard that was mentioned, and it has to be worked into the emergency prepared plan for this area. And so I just wanted to let you know that those two items were discussed and that we may have to take part in perhaps a flood plan on down the line or something that would come about from what the state's requesting. So, the other thing I'll report is KLCR has a honker broadcast here in about thirty minutes. Hopefully, we'll be through by then.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. Well, I, I, and I tell your sponsors when I go there, I appreciate that they do that because it's a nice connection.
Nice. Thank you, Chair.
I have nothing to report, so if there's nothing else, then we will close the meeting at four forty, or four fifty-nine.